To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Kate Campbell. Cassandra Ross, President. Larry Seer?
Here.
Vina Shade?
Here.
Mark Terry?
Here.
Aaron Wilson?
Here.
Bill Wilson?
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda is you, Chastity. I know she's here. There you are.
Hi, I'm Chastity Foltz. I'm the Community Development Administrator from the Planning and Development Department. I am here tonight to discuss the Community Development Lock Program and this year's federal fiscal year 21 application. I do have a sign-in sheet. If anybody hasn't signed in, would you please do that? We have to show that we have record of public attendance at our meetings. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the program in general, discuss again the application, and this year's Louis Town Borough is going to receive $140,000, or $140,263, of which $119,224 will be available for project costs, and $21,039 will go to the Planning and Development Department for administrative purposes. Eligible activities must meet one of the following national objectives: 70% of all activities must be funded, benefit low-to-moderate income persons, removal of slow and breakable vehicles.
Sorry.
That's okay. Or be in particular urgency. The kinds of projects that we can fund and have funded in the past include water and sewer line replacement and improvements, housing rehabilitation, construction of affordable housing, construction or reconstruction of public facilities, public services that are new or provide quantifiable increase in deliveries of services, street improvements, removal of architectural barriers, acquisition and relocation, clearance and demolition. It's important to note that if any activities are undertaken that result in the displacement of families or individuals, Louis Town Borough is responsible for placing all low and moderate income housing units that may be demolished or converted as a result of use of our CDBG funds. We make every attempt to avoid displacement, and we do not plan any activities that would displace anybody. We encourage every citizen to participate in the process, to provide comment to either myself or to Louis Town Borough, and we would love to take those comments and suggestions into consideration in trying to find projects. Last year, we funded the Fifth Street ramps. It was a Fifth Street ADA ramp improvement, and with the intention of funding the paving of those areas with this year's funds. If that is still agreeable to the council, we will continue to get quotes and go forward with the process of putting that in the application. We can also fund and look at other projects as well. The second public hearing I plan to hold on September 13th. I did have initially say 5:30, but we can schedule that for 5 o'clock if the council wishes. The county will adopt a cumulative resolution on September 30th at 9:00 a.m., and the application this year is due to DCD by October 28th. Competitive applications are also open with DCD with a minimum request of $100,000 and no maximum, and all applications for the competitive nature are due to DCD by February 3rd, 2022. I also want to share some news with you that I had shared with Kim in case you've not heard. Last year, we were received what we called CDBG CV funds. Part of the CARES Act gave CDBG funds that we had to use with CDBG guidelines, but also had to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the coronavirus. Louis Town Borough, along with the other three entitlements in the county of Brown, Derry, and Granville Townships, and the county again, all agreed to put all of their funds to purchase laptops for low- to moderate-income public school students to help them in times of remote learning or quarantining. This has been a very challenging process. The school was not allowed to be a direct recipient of the CDBG funds because of federal entitlement rules, so we were working with the teachers' union as their nonprofit to try to funnel the laptops through them. As we've been trying to negotiate the sub-recipient agreement with the teachers' union, we have continued to approach hurdles with them that they have ultimately decided they did not want to participate in the program. We then started to work with the Missam County Library. We approached some even more hurdles, and two weeks before school left out, my daughter asked me to sign a form for her on the way to school that had just been given out the day before. The school district decided to go ahead and opt to purchase laptops for every student on a one-for-one basis. Our funds are no longer needed. Disappointed, the school district did not give me a heads up. They knew we were continuing to try to work with another nonprofit and still provide the laptops to the school students. Unfortunately, there is no longer a need, which means we now have to find a new project to use those funds.
And those funds amounted to around $62,000, or $61 something, correct?
61,487.
Thank you.
Okay. And I know that we are limited as to what we can do with those funds.
Exactly.
But we have to make a decision soon, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So right now, I'm trying to, as we've done the other public hearings, trying to just make everybody aware of what's going on. Some of the ideas, I went out and I researched what other counties have spent their funds on. One of the biggest responses, and that was one of the things that DCD pushed early on, was mortgage, rent, and utility assistance. We can supply up to six months' worth of mortgage, rent, utility assistance, and we can also bring anybody who is behind. That first payment can include all their arrears, and then you go forward five months. That also kicks in lead bait, lead testing, and then a lead abatement. Seems kind of crazy, but it's part of DCD rules. One of the other things that they have also used the monies for is to do HVAC for public services, public facilities such as senior centers, youth detention, or youth centers, not youth detention centers, any youth centers. So we're thinking of things like Lumina, any senior centers. The shelter is eligible. We can do HVAC upgrades as well as if they have windows that don't open, because some buildings originally were built with windows that wouldn't open, we can replace windows so that we can allow more circulation. So we're thinking about reaching out for areas such as those to see if we can do something like that. We can do job training. We can do public facilities and parks. Kim and I have talked about that. Rec Park unfortunately is mostly in the floodway, so we are not allowed to use DCD funds in the floodway. The only park that's out of the floodway is just up on this side towards Ballfields, so I don't know if there would be anything to do there.
What about the park that's up on behind Valley Street? Is that the fifth ward?
Fifth Ward.
This ward park, right?
Is it public-owned or private?
Borough.
Then yes, yes, that's an eligible facility. We can do something there. Victory Park is also, something needs to be done there.
Okay. And when's our date that we have to make the decision?
All funds have to be spent and the contract has to be closed out with the DCD by December of next year.
22.
2022, yes.
Now, can you provide a couple of these kind of jobs, or then we can have to get a little point five?
No.
You can combine a couple.
We can combine a couple. We can do it. Depends where the need is.
As long as it's in those earmarked areas according to the CDMs.
Yes. I did get a request through the county from New Visions. They are looking to establish a program called Senior Net, and in their application, they actually mentioned this is a direct result of trying to keep seniors connected as a result of COVID. They don't have the technology to go to tele-visits for the doctor, they're not knowing how to use FaceTime, things like that, to keep in touch with family and friends. They're only asking $11,000. They target seniors and severely disabled and veterans. Veterans aren't a beneficiary, but you know, like an automatic qualifying beneficiary for the CDBG program, but the severely disabled and the seniors are, so we could look at that. That would be a fair share project, but if everybody, you know, would have based on our percentages of the population from 2010, we have percentages that we would be able to put in there.
Those last few ideas weren't in that email that you sent, were they?
The New Visions?
Yes.
I did actually send that along too.
I didn't remember seeing that one.
I added that to my stuff to cover on here. What I passed out to the councilman on here is the packet for New Visions and the request that they put together for part of that project. You should have it in front of you.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Louis Town, I can say, is fortunate that you have options. Unfortunately, some of the other entitlements that we're working with don't have very many options, so we're really kind of looking more at fair share projects for those.
So if the council, when they decide to vote on this, says, hey, we'll pay our fair share for the New Visions ones, say there's, let's just say there's $55,000 left, just throw that at them, then we can still use that for something else?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a feeling we're probably, unless we come up with some big project, I don't foresee another project coming through like the laptops did that's going to be like, let's all pull our money together and do something, even if we come up with an HVAC program or project for a senior center for Lumina.
Oh, is this, let me ask you that, as far as Lumina went and HVAC, is it limited to just that, or, I mean, does Lumina have, when I think of those public facilities, like the Lumina Center, senior centers, the library, are they all up to date on like Wi-Fi and?
Well, the I, well, Wi-Fi, we could probably say we need to establish better connections for residents to be able to do telehealth, to do remote education, to do things like that. Those are things. I know the library is good. Louis Town in general is very good with internet.
I know, but.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yes, it is. Yes, that's definitely one to think of. As you have more ideas, please throw them at us, because we're trying to really brainstorm and come up with anything that we can.
But we could use it for that fifth ward park.
Yes.
And are we limited on anything, because we've had interest in wanting to do, we've realized that there are children within our community that are disabled, and we would like to kind of look at putting in like a disabled swing for kids for that type of thing, and if we could have a designated park where we had.
That would work. Even a regular park is good, because you're responding to the coronavirus by encouraging people to get outside, to get fresh air, to socially distance, so you don't have to add more equipment to get people separated.
Right.
That's all good things to do.
Okay, great. Gives us something to think about. Thank you.
You're welcome. It is. What's turning into from a bad thing is turning into something good.
Well, sometimes you got to make lemonade out of lemons, right?
That's right. That's right.
Thank you, Chastity.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, we'll move on to Hearing of Persons Present. First on our list is Brad, and I'm going to watch your, Zook?
Yes.
Zook? Okay. Hi, Brad.
Thank you for having me here, council members.
Is the microphone on?
I'm not sure.
Nope. There, can you turn that on for us? Aha!
Does that sound good?
Thank you!
Good, okay.
You want to play the deaf version?
Yeah. Does that work better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm here representing the Herr family. Darryl Herr is here with me also. We're here to talk about the property down on Wilson Avenue in South Wayne regarding the EDUs that were available. Brief history of it, you may remember that the Hears bought the neighboring properties that are over on South Main Street, so there were three properties, three parcels. On one of those, there had been 20 EDUs that were rented. When they converted the property, they, they only used 10, and from discussions with Rex Bank and a couple others, were given the assurance that they essentially could bank the other 10 and use them all as adjoining property. So we're here to try to get final official consent that they've got those 10 EDUs in the bank, and if so, then they're ready to move forward and submit the plans and then start construction on the project. Darryl's here, as I said, to answer any questions. Do you have any questions about that?
Hi.
Sure, go ahead.
So this was the issue that was brought forth to one of the committees, and I can't remember if it was finance or law or more, but it went to one of the committees, and the discussion went back and forth as to whether the EDUs would be granted or not. There was no decision made at the committee, so the recommendation from the committee was to bring it to the Borough Council during the meeting for discussion. And what was discussed at the committee meeting for the councilmen that weren't present was the EDUs in question were part of the Green Gables area, and I put in front of each of you council members a PowerPoint of the land in question. This is on the second page. You can see the Green Gables apartments, and then the land in question now, which is listed as Sandra J. Herr. So the EDUs that were in place, the Green Gables apartment, have been sold. I guess they sold the Green Gables apartment, so he wants the EDUs that were part of that property to use on the property where it says Sandra J. Herr, and that's the property that's on the front page of your PowerPoint. The issue was, one of the issues was that one of our employees at the time had promised Mr. Herr that he would still have access to those 10 EDUs. The issue was, it was never brought forth to council, and you can't make propositions for the borough. Only the council can make decisions of that magnitude, even I can't do that as a borough manager, and that's where it was left hanging. And that's what was decided at the council meeting, that since there wasn't anything in writing, and it didn't come to the Borough Council, they're bringing it to the Borough Council now to make that decision whether they can have the 10 EDUs on the property that's on the front of your PowerPoint slide.
I remember that.
Have we talked about it and said?
I thought we did vote on it.
I thought we said that if there was nothing in writing, then, no.
Yeah, I mean, if they paid, I mean, they paid for it.
This was always, this was always to be the third phase of the project.
But it's a whole different phase. They were never paid for, correct?
They were paid, sure, they were paid for when they were first issued.
Yeah, they weren't paid for.
They didn't use them.
Almost positive.
Water buckle.
Equivalent dwelling unit.
Almost positive we passed that motion before that they would get those 10.
No, it was the opposite heavy.
It was passed if there was written proof, the council would honor it, but there was never any written proof.
That's what we passed.
Well, Rex, Rex was involved in that.
But if I can, several months ago, I got communication from Kim, I'm not sure who here in the office, saying just that, that if we could come up with something in writing. And so I researched it, I made phone calls, I spoke to Mike Dippery, the former superintendent, and I realized this is just me saying it, but he told me on the phone, sure, he remembered it, he would go back over to the office and look through the records. He was sure there would be something there, but then in fact, he told me later he couldn't find anything there, but he did remember the conversation. And then, Kim, were you able to talk with Rex?
Oh, Rex is here.
Right.
Yeah, Mike Dippery, myself had a meeting.
I can't hear you, Rex.
I said Mike Dippery, myself had a meeting, and Mike agreed that they would have these 10 in the bank to use for future development, but Mike never put anything on paper. He was the superintendent of the street, but he told me to put in anything in writing.
And I'll just say, based on that, then, the Hears went ahead, they presented their loan application to the bank for financing for the project based on that. They've got approval from the bank based on that, and so, you know, they, they just went ahead in reliance on these conversations. That's where we're at.
I'll make a margin if we give them, if we give them the 10. I mean, I do have a comment.
Second.
Any other discussion? Call those in favor of permitting the, it was 10, right?
Yes.
10 EDUs? We better roll call for this, because I'm thinking the eyes are going to get.
Let me ask a quick question, just to be sure. When you say you feel they do have it coming, I mean, what gives you that thought? Because I truly want to know. I mean, if it is something they purchased, they buy all right shots.
Supposedly, when this first started, they were going to expand bigger than it is. Yeah, originally, and they paid for the whole works.
But that was for a different parcel, you mean?
Yeah, it was a different parcel. It was all there, but then they, they didn't use that parcel, but the, but the EDUs were still, they were still paid, there was 10 extra paid for.
Even though it was a separate parcel, so there's that to use those 10?
Right, right.
Okay.
That was the original plan to begin with.
Yeah, right, that was the original, but they, but they never.
This should have been written down for future council to be aware of.
So now, they are going to do it. So I mean, in all actuality, they have those 10 already paid for. I mean, the money was put up for them.
And you're going to turn it into an apartment, right, Mr. Herr?
Exactly. Yeah, if you look at the pictures that Kim presented, right now, basically, it's an empty lot with a Darrell garage on there.
Garage or something, yeah.
There is a curb cut already in place, and so the idea is to put in 10 apartments, build it up as nice as the other two parcels that are right next to it, and if I will say, thereby increase your tax base for the.
Oh, absolutely, exactly.
And that's a lot of what was discussed at the council, or the committee was about, you know?
Yeah, but we didn't have that information that this was a, the project.
Well, we also didn't have the confirmation that the conversation actually occurred. Okay, we can go back to the vote. Go ahead. Yep. Okay. Cassandra Ross?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Vina Shade? Yes. Mark Terry?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for investing in our community, Mr. Herr.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys again.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda for Hearing of Persons Present is Zach Willard, and he'll be joining us via Zoom. He is there somewhere. There he is. He is here to discuss the refinancing of the burr of the sewer ponds.
Correct. Okay, great. Well, I'm going to actually turn it over to Jens Domgaard real quick. He's going to give us, kind of set the table, and then we're going to walk through the handout that I believe you all have in front of you, and I can share my screen if that's helpful for the people virtually. To Jens, if you want to start.
Hey, Zach, hello everyone. So you'll recall that council enacted an ordinance on March 8th this year where it authorized up to $17 million of general obligation bonds of the borough to a few different things. Most of that money was earmarked to refinance debt of the water authority. But there was also debt authorized to finance, to refinance the 2016 bonds of the borough that were primarily associated with the sewer system. Again, financially, the borough divides its sewer financings between that portion that's paid solely by Louis Town Borough customers and the collection system, and those that are shared with outside municipalities benefiting from the sewage treatment plant. So there was a little of each of all, and then there was a little portion associated with some borough general fund type projects. So that was also authorized as well as possibly funding capital projects. So that ordinance is still on the books. For a variety of reasons, it hasn't removed, primarily due to negotiations and issues with regard to the water authority. So what's being proposed this evening is to refinance the 2016 bonds of the borough home. So that means sewer and a little bit of general fund type projects. I was told within the last, you know, last few weeks that the borough needs to purchase a new street sweeper. That's about $200,000. It would typically be paid from the general fund. The borough also needs a $400,000 plus or minus back truck for the sewer system, again, attributable to the sewage collection system and not to the water. So what Zach's going to be talking about is to address those two needs and have the two plus four, $600,000 allocate that would be additional borrowing in addition to refinancing the sewer bond. Now, what I want to tell you is that if we do this filing, and we don't need a formal vote this evening, because we've already been authorized in that ordinance, but what's new here is that as part of the filing with the state to approve this financing, we would advise the state that we will not be issuing bonds of the borough to refinance the water authority bonds. So I know you have other things on your agenda tonight that are related to that topic, but I just want, you should know that this really does put an end to the refinancing of the water authority debt, as was contemplated back in March. So with that, I'll turn it over to Zach, and then you can answer his questions of my own. My Zach.
Thanks, Jens.
Okay, yeah, great. So, well, let me share my screen, but that's okay. I think you all have this handout in front of you. So, and just, just to say this again clearly, this, what we're going to talk about today has nothing to do with the water debt, so this is just going to be the borough's existing 2016 bonds, which you can take the old higher interest rate and you can replace that with a new lower interest rate in today's market, similar to what we did exactly two years ago, was when we refinanced 29 bonds, to the day, actually. So that's the first piece, and then the second piece is what Jens just said, that, you know, you do have some small capital projects that you can build into the financing and kind of get this all wrapped up and done, and then it would kind of get rid of the ordinance on the books, and this is just for, for general fund debt. So if you take a look at the handout and you flip to the first page, which is an interest rate chart, the important piece here is, you know, it is a good time, one, to refinance debt, and two, if you have new projects, to get those financed, because rates continue to remain at, you know, all-time historic lows, kind of post-COVID. So when you look at the middle part of the chart, you know, you can see rates going back to the early 90s, and you see where we are today on the far right-hand side. You know, we're within, you know, a quarter or a half a percent of the lowest interest rates in history. And then when you look at the bottom half, it's kind of zoomed in even more, and again, you know, you can see rates are just in great shape. So that part of this, you know, kind of start, there's a line as far as having the very low interest rate by. Now, if you go to the second page, page number two in the bottom right-hand corner, this is a snapshot of the borough's debt the way it is now. So you have some Pennvest debt in column two, you have a small note with Juniata Valley Bank in column three, then you have your 2016 bonds highlighted in yellow. That's what we're focused on tonight. And when you scroll down to the bottom of column four, you see a date that says June 15, 2021. That's the call date. That's the first possible date to which you can refinance your debt. So you have to wait until you get to that date, and that's kind of where we are today. So that's why we're talking about it. Now, the interest rates on your 2016 bonds are already pretty low, but again, just because rates are at all-time lows, you can save a little bit of money. And then column five is your 2019 bonds. Those are the ones that we refinanced two years ago today, and that's, that saved a good chunk of change for the borough. And then in column six, you see your total payments. Okay, so that's your debt, broken out by the different, you know, bond issues and bank loans. Now, the next page takes those same bonds and bank loans and breaks them into the different kind of buckets that you think about from a budgetary perspective, okay? So you have, in columns two, three, and four, you have your debt that's related to the wastewater treatment plan, okay? So that's, you know, all of your Pennvest, some of the 2016s, and then most of the 2019. And then in column five, it shows you what would appear in your budget for the wastewater treatment fund each year. It's about $1,050,000 in column five, if you see that kind of going down budget years. And then the same with columns six and seven and eight. That's the debt that's associated with the collection system. And then finally, over in columns nine and 10 is the very small. And then finally, over in columns nine and 10 is the very small bit of debt that you have outstanding related to, you know, general obligation projects of the borough. Okay, so this is kinda like a real, you know, a real deep breakdown of your debt. But this is, you know, when you dive into the budget, and you dive into where the dollars go, this is how it's broken out between these three pieces. Okay? I'm gonna pause there quick, any questions about kinda how things are today? You know, this is, if you do nothing, this is how your debt looks now. Does that make sense, and kinda refresh everybody's memory? Okay, so now, let's go down page to page numbered four in the bottom right-hand corner. So this page is meant to be a summary of, well, what if we did go out and we refinanced the 2016 bonds? Okay? And we also issued new debt for two things. $200,000 in the general fund, which as Jens said, I think is for a street sweeper. Okay, that's in column one. So when you kinda scroll down, column one, it says 2021 general fund. It shows that there's about 200, it says construction fund deposit, 200,000. Okay? You save a few dollars in the refinancing in the general fund, because most of the savings is in the collection system. And then in column eight, it shows you, your debt going forward for the new money would be in column eight. So you kinda have like three years, basically, of debt that would be related to the street sweeper if you move forward, got that 200,000. Okay? And then in column two, where it says 2021 collections, right to the right of that, there you're gonna have $400,000 of additional new money for projects. You're gonna save about $40,000, $41,000 net of costs through the refinancing. And we're actually also gonna shorten the term of your debt through the refinancing so that the final maturity, which is currently 2037, we're gonna shorten it to be 2034. So you kinda take three years off of the debt payments for the collection system. So then column nine shows you the savings that you get through the refinancing, and then column 10 shows you what the new debt would look like related to the $400,000 projects. Okay, so that's in column 10. And then finally, in column three, where it says 2021 wastewater, okay? You're gonna save, you know, somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 net of costs through the refinancing there, and we're not issuing any new debt there, from our standpoint, because there's no need, from what we hear, for you to have a new debt. So you, you know, you kinda save a couple bucks. And so, so that's the summary of kinda the three buckets of the 2016 bonds. Okay, you have three, three different allocations, and then we're issuing new debt for two of them. So that's what the debt would look like. So then, what we showed you on the next two pages, it's kinda the same pages we showed you before, but here, this is the after. Okay? So when you go to column five, I'm sorry, page five, page number five in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see we get rid of column four, which was your old 2016 bonds, those go away, because we're gonna refinance them. And then you're gonna have column six, which is your new 2021 debt. And so that's gonna include the savings from the refinancing, as well as the new money projects that we talked about. And as I said, we shortened it by three years also, so the final maturity is three years shorter. Okay? And then finally, page numbered six, again, is kinda the new version of the three allocations. So in column three, you can see the 2016s go away, and then in column five, you have your new 2021 debt associated with wastewater treatment fund. And then the same thing in the collection system and the non-sewer debt. The 16s go away, and then you have your new 2021 debt that's issued. And so, we highlighted in red there in columns 10 and 14, those are really the two funds that, you know, kinda changed, because they have the new, the new projects associated with them. So we highlighted columns 10 and column 14. And what we're really talking about here is, when you look at column 10, the collection system, the old annual payment in there was about $180,000. And when you go through this, this borrowing, you save a little bit of money, and you issue the 400,000 of new money, your payment basically goes up to a high of like $188,000. So your budgeted debt service increases, you know, a few thousand dollars in order to get that 400,000 for the project. Does that make sense to everybody? So when you compare that page back to page number three, you know, you can see what the change is. And then, when you look at column 14, it's kinda the same thing. So column 14 before, if you do nothing, your payment in the 2021 budget year is $121,000. And if you go forward and you issue the 200,000 for the street sweeper, it extends your debt about three years, but you're still gonna pay about $120,000 a year. So rather than your payments going away after the 2021 budget, you're gonna have the street sweeper, and then you'll have three years of additional payments of about $121,000. So you don't actually have to change your debt service line item, you're just gonna have to pay it for three additional years. So you do have a little bit of a unique situation in that your debt falls off, it goes away here shortly, so you can take advantage of that drop-off, you can take advantage of today's very low interest rates, and kinda knock out, you know, two of these projects in conjunction with the refinancing. So that was an outful, I'll pause there. Are there any questions, or Jens, did I miss anything that you wanted to hit on?
I think that, that covers it very well. So I guess we'll entertain any questions of council.
I have a question. Looking at page four, if, and if I'm hearing you correctly, Zach, so we would shorten that debt by three years and essentially save about $53,000 a year.
So, so let me re-say that again, so you're gonna shorten the debt by three years. So let's go, let's all look on the same page, so we're looking at page numbered four.
Right.
Okay? So in column nine, when you scroll down to the bottom there, you can see it, you know, it shows you save $31,000 in the 2037 year, $26,000 in the 26 year, and then $27,000 in the 35 year. Those are the three years that we're shaving off of that piece of debt. You had, and we're just, we're shrinking it up by those three years, because you have the ability to do that and not impact your payment.
Okay.
But, but you're gonna, the $53,000 that you're saving, that's in total, when you look at the collection system and the wastewater system.
Okay.
So this, this refinancing is not as lucrative as that one we did two years ago.
Right.
Again, that's because the rates on, on this bond are actually very low. You know, really, in a normal environment, we wouldn't even be talking about this refinancing, but because rates have gotten so low with, you know, just the state and the economy, COVID, you know, you do kinda have this small window of opportunity here where you can, you know, squeeze out another 40,000 or 50,000 savings, you know, in conjunction with these new projects.
Okay, thank you.
That helpful, yep? Any other thoughts or questions?
So again, we don't need any actual vote by council. I think that the other agenda items later on, depending, I guess, how they go, if they go a different way, then perhaps, you know, we'll come back for additional instructions. But right now, as we said, we will be abandoning the refinance of the water debt.
Does anyone else have any questions for Zach or Jens? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Hey. Hey, Perry, thank you.
Have a nice night.
We'll wait here for you, thanks.
Yep. Okay, we have an addition for hearing a person's presence, Dan Taptich.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Dan.
So, my name's Dan Taptich, and I'm here tonight representing Sacred Heart in their proposed subdivision or acquisition of lands from Mark Severs. So you know, the Severs property, front lawn Academy Hill, the rear part of the Severs property runs along the alley there, adjacent to the Sacred Heart School. There's a little piece that comes down that touches that alley. It's about 1,850 square feet, plus or minus. Sacred Heart is proposing to purchase that from Mr. Severs to possibly develop as future parking for the school property. It'll be a non-building lot addition to the existing adjacent lands of the Severs. So, you know, it's not gonna be a standalone lot, it's not gonna be developed or conveyed separately. It'll just be a proposal lot addition at this point.
Okay.
So this was presented to your planning commission earlier this month. They reviewed the county comments, and they approved it with one minor technical issue that Mr. Taptich resolved by adding some language to the plan, I think, about the non-building.
Correct, right.
It was recommended for approval by the planning commission.
Hang on, my.
Discussion? Paul, those in favor of approving the subdivision for Frank?
What is my opinion?
Sure.
A trail right next to this, with this property, that we're probably gonna get rid of and put parking in very, very quickly. That's gonna be about four slots, and then this land, it has to be developed. That might be that years down the road, that'll be another four slots. So I just wanna make sure that we can put in this parking, and that's approved by the council.
Okay. It's definitely needed up there. Absolutely, I know that from firsthand experience, so, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much, thank you. If I could stop by later in the week.
Yep, we'll get these signed and, and have them for you.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Have a good night. Okay.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody, thank you very much.
Okay, so, we can move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like pulled out of there? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was looking down, not up. I should have looked up, come on up. Give us your name.
John Aiken.
Hi, John, I thought that's who you were, how are you?
Oh, I've been better.
I'm sorry. What can we do for you?
Well, a couple issues tonight. Guess we'll start with the minor ones. I live on Central Avenue, which is a dead-end street now, has been for a while. In order to get down the alley with my trucks to get out, like when the main street's blocked with cars or whatever, I have to get down through that alley, and it's posted no parking. But, you get down that alley most time, I think I mentioned recs, how about, are sitting there on the alley most time. They don't do anything about it, I mentioned law enforcement different times, they don't care. But you can't get down that alley with a truck. You just can't. And it's posted, all it takes is enforcement.
This is an alley by Central Ave?
Yeah.
It's, it's the alley between Valley Street and Central Avenue, correct?
Between Central Avenue and Logan.
And Logan, okay, okay, just checking.
Behind.
I know there's two there, so, okay.
That's the, that's the minor issue.
Okay.
I guess we're gonna start with, the next issue would be the towing, and the lack, you know, your police department only uses one company, and I don't get any, I have a tow company here and down, and I don't get any calls.
You're talking to the right person in front of you, the mayor's in charge of the police department.
We've had this discussion a few times in the past as well. And lately, what was it, Bill, about two weeks ago? I had a call, one of my customers called me to go to a rec, and your officers informed my customer that Carson was on the way, they didn't have a choice. And I raised a major stink about that, and I got towed, but I was in front of Bill and Appleton too. I wasn't real happy that day.
Okay, John, let me check on, I know you had an issue with this before, let me check on this, because I thought we had taken care of that between the before and you, and we've got some of the.
Oh, no, 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 I don't get anything anyway, I haven't got anything in years.
This isn't something that just started.
No.
I remember discussing this before.
We went through, we went through this years, we went through this years ago, and it was set up where there was gonna be a rotation done on, on the accident call with, where towing was needed.
It all goes to one company.
And, and I, I agree with you 100%. They, they don't ask anybody, they tell you who you're gonna get.
That's exactly right, and that's wrong.
It's not right.
And it's direct violation of state law, when they told my customer that another company was coming, they didn't have a choice.
Yeah, that's my choice, if it's my vehicle, I would think that I get to decide who towed.
But it's state law, they were in direct violation of state law.
Well, you know, and another thing, like you said, you know, we're trying to keep as many businesses around the area we can get. You know, and it's, it's only fair, when you have more than one, that you try and alternate a little bit and give them all a piece of the pie, you know.
I disagree with that.
That's a huge fine, I'm not getting any of it.
Well, we want you to have a piece, John.
I'm not familiar with the rotation, how they were setting it up, is that through dispatch? That was supposed to be.
I, I think it was, I thought it was somehow affiliated with the police department.
That was, rotation in the borough went away when Chief Harper went away. It hasn't been, it's been back to the same game.
Because in, in the first place, when you get an accident call, the, the police are the ones that determine usually when they get there, if you're gonna need a tow truck. So, you know, they basically.
But that should be done through dispatch.
It could be, it could be done, it could be done, yes, it very easily could be done with dispatch. I mean, they can keep, they can keep track of it as well as the police force can keep track of it.
It would be easier.
I mean, but, but it, it needs, it could be discussed, and, you know, I think you have a legitimate right to complain about it.
All right. We need to have this in writing, that this is what we're gonna, you know what I mean? So the next council doesn't come along and say, well, you don't know, it's not, we need to have it written down, that there's a rotation schedule, because there may be more people that come on board in the future. You know? And there's a reason, maybe a piece of that pie as well.
As long as they have the state requirements as far as insurance.
Exactly.
The license and the DOT and the UCL.
And I went through my, my biannual audit last Friday.
What's a requirement, state requirement for just two-year?
There's a whole pack.
Liability?
There's a whole pack and stuff.
You've got everything you.
I have it all, I don't have my file with me tonight. I was late getting here, I would have had the whole file with me, I bought this for that.
Let's go another step farther, the other night, now the officer took your license.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, we haven't got that for yet, we haven't got into that discussion yet, I'm just, I'm trying not to get wound up, Bill. I think I'm doing pretty good so far, because it's.
Okay, well, let us, let us work on this. Like I said, I was not aware of this.
And I, I had an harassment, I had a harassment issue from your officers the other night. I was on the way to a meeting Thursday night, and of course, I couldn't get on my street, so there I ended up behind schedule. But anyway, I go to pull one to Logan, go on bypass, go to Memphis Town, and I've got blinking lights behind me from one of your officers. So I'm thinking, okay, and I called Bill, just because that seems like the thing to do these days. But, yeah, he come up and, your officer claimed I rolled a stop sign, which I didn't, and at that point, he proceeded to nitpick anything he could nitpick on. Brand new truck, he was harassing me about a sticker on the windshield beside the inspection sticker. He was giving me hassle, because the truck wasn't loaded yet, it's a brand new truck.
Can you tell us who the officer was, John?
Matthew Lynch.
That's one of the new ones, isn't it?
Barely do, yeah. Did he try to for anything?
Oh, yeah, he said to me for rolling a stop sign, which is gonna cost me a bunch of money, and the insurance inspector doesn't throw that out. I don't need all this hassle, I'm trying to run a business.
Also, we still have no.
I have no clue.
He has 13 years law enforcement experience in Champaign-Bourne. He's mixed up qualified, so, and if, if he says you wrote through the stop sign, I would have taken his word for it, especially when I can see it on the body. So, and once again, the issue with the inspection sticker.
The inspection sticker was fine, his troop chef looked at it four hours before that for my biannual inspection.
Was there something over it? What was he talking about?
There's a sticker beside it. I have a picture of that, actually, I think I sent to Bill.
The issue with license, when he goes to return his license, there's stuff.
He kept my stuff, I hadn't, I called state police, I tried to get a hold of chief.
Would you let me finish this?
Why did he take your license, John?
That's what I was getting to.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
When he came back with the ticket, you started getting agitated, you had Bill on the phone. When he came back with the ticket, you started getting agitated, you had Bill on the phone. That broke his normal procedure of handing you your license and registration and the ticket back. That was an accident, he did not seizure arrest. He went back that night to your house and left the card on the door. No one answered the door.
That was a lot of trouble, made a living.
I was in patrol for only just five years, and there's numerous times where somebody's license fell down, I don't give a back. The sticker over the inspection. Yeah.
Safe there, though.
There was not supposed to be anything over the inspection sticker.
Sticker was on the truck when I bought it, so I paid premium for that sticker.
Well, I'm sure he did, it's premium truck, it's a nice truck, but.
I mean, and the officer showed up with, with, with an agenda, I mean, he was.
There's no agenda, he doesn't know you.
He doesn't know, I don't, the first time I met him, he'd come up with an attitude, like came to the window. He comes to the window with an attitude.
Well, we can review it, I don't think, or, or, I didn't see any issue. But there definitely needs to be a rotation of the place to avoid this kind of thing.
And I definitely need my customers not being pulled Carson's car, that's cool. That's absolutely cool, next time it happens, I am gonna file a claim to stay turned down.
Let us work on that, like I said, we know where that was happening. Can we get your contact information, John, so that we can follow up with you as well?
Seven one seven, nine nine four, one one six three, that's my version.
One one six three? Thank you. Okay, let us work on that and I'll get back to you soon.
Can we, so, totally lucky with, totally lucky.
Say, I.
Yeah, we can do that tomorrow, okay.
It's just like there's, there's no way guys know.
No, they don't know, no, they don't know.
So.
Okay. All right, we'll try to get ahold of them.
Good, Chief.
No.
Okay, I don't do crashes and.
Our chief's on vacation, he's out of town right now.
Say, nobody, I've been trying to get ahold of him since the, I tried calling several times, trying to get ahold of him since they, the first issue. And I couldn't get.
You should call me.
John, I'll give you a call, set up a meeting and come and see you.
Okay.
I'll see if I can help.
Just follow up, make sure that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, have a great night. Okay, anyone else before I, I miss you, I don't wanna do that, so I'm sorry about that. Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wanted pulled out of the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for passage.
Can I question, what was the letter from the county commission? The last thing on the.
Yeah.
What was it? I actually printed it out.
Yeah, it was just saying that we got our state legal text.
Oh, okay, 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 I'm fine.
Yes.
Do you want a copy of this?
Yeah, okay, no, I'm, I'm fine.
I make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor of passing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on.
All right, good evening, everyone, first thing on my list is a phone system. The borough has antiquated phone systems throughout our, basically throughout our operations. We went and looked at them and we have a quote to replace the phone systems, it's in the budget. And the cost is $9,750 with a recurring cost of $500 a month to maintain the phone system, and it's already in the budget.
Can you repeat the numbers again?
That's all the phones.
Yeah, all phones, $9,750, that's a one-time fee, and then it's a monthly recurring fee of $540 a month.
And that is.
We talk, we talk.
These are desk phones, good question, Heavy, these are the desk phones on the desks in their offices. The police department.
Yes, includes every department, and it will allow us to transfer between departments.
Okay, voice.
It's a voice over internet, yeah.
It's a good system.
Yeah.
Originally the budget was only $10,000 just for the police station.
Right.
So this.
This comes under budget for the entire borough.
So this is.
It's been needed for all.
Yes.
So what, so those of you in the back that can't hear, she said just the police department alone was budgeted at about $10,000 for the year. This $10,000 pretty much will cover the entire borough, so we're saving money by going with this plan.
And maybe we won't have any more dropped.
We dropped. Yeah, yeah, so I just need a motion to approve, to approve it to move on with the plan.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
The next issue is the ADA, ADA chairlift. The ADA chairlift downstairs is not working properly. We had a company come in and do an estimate, and it's the actual company that actually installed it, and the estimate is $31,150 for the repair. It's not to replace it, if we went through and replaced it, which includes all the infrastructure, the building permits, et cetera, it's a lot, lot more than that. So we are just doing a major repair on it, and the cost is $31,150. And this went through the committees and they recommended, they recommend approval.
Well, it's a necessity and.
Yeah, and we looked at other, we looked at other places.
We looked at other places, yes.
They have to.
We did.
Yeah, we have.
But we did look at other places, and all those other places we looked at sent us back to the same company, because they're all tied together, so there's no other estimates, that's the estimate.
I make a motion.
Agreed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next thing to discuss is, I have given direction to Rex Fink, our code enforcement officer, that if people come in and ask for a building permit, and they're delinquent on their taxes, the building permit is denied. That is covered under state law and our Borough Ordinance number 2020-3. If there's any discussion, we can open the floor now. Okay.
This is, this is the one we were talking about, the roof?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Did you hear that, Heavy?
No.
Say that one more time, please.
Me or Bill?
You.
Oh, okay.
No, I heard him.
So I've given direction to Rex, as the code enforcement officer, to follow the state law and ordinance number 2020-3, that if people come in looking for building permits, property owners, and they want a building permit for their property and they're behind on taxes, the building permit is denied until they pay their taxes. So that is in place right now. So we open the floor for discussion if anybody wants to discuss it.
What if they go ahead and start doing it?
Start doing the repairs without the building permit? Yeah, then they break the code and things get parried.
What's it, what if it's an issue of safety?
Those are covered in there, those clauses, so all that stuff is looked at when they come in. If they come in and say they have six months to repair something, say Rex gives them a six months to repair it, they can come in, there are certain leeways we can do with the building permit to make sure it still happens. If it's contested in court, we can't deny the permit as long as it's still contested in court, that kind of stuff. It's, it's a, Mayor, it's a good question, it's a common sense thing, it's not like carte blanche, but the bottom line is, you know, if you owe taxes and you want a building permit, there better be a reason why, you know, you need the permit and not pay your taxes, otherwise it's gonna be denied. Next issue, if I may, next issue is letter D, Deputy Borough Manager Trezor Resolution. This is a resolution that's in Borough Code that states when the borough manager's out of the office or out of the area, he should appoint one person to be the acting borough manager for signatures and decisions if the borough manager can't be reached. This was written up to have Jennifer Miller as the deputy borough manager to fulfill that role under Borough Code. And that needs to be voted on.
I make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Roll call, please.
Sure.
Sandra Goss?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
No.
Vina Shae?
Yes.
Mark Terry?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
No.
I added two more things on there, letter E, which isn't in your agendas, came in afterwards. This has to do with the discussion earlier with Chastity at the county. This has to do with the CDBG slash CV monies for the laptops that's coming back to borough, $61,487. What you have in front of you, one of your packets, is the request from the New Visions for, a request for about $11,000 to help them set up that internet station with all the laptops and stuff to help the people she discussed earlier. We can vote on this now, or we can talk about it at our next finance meeting in a month. I don't think there's any timeline on here, I don't think there's an issue with delaying the vote as you'd like.
Oh, I'm gonna say with that, I think helping our elderly get more in touch with technology, I think that's a fantastic idea. I know firsthand personally that there are lots that do struggle with that, and if New Vision is willing to reach out and do something with this for them, I think it's a fantastic idea.
And that's why I asked, if you go through and approve the packet in front of you, which is about $11,000, that the money that is left over we can use for some other things.
Correct. I just think this is a great idea, as far as, you know, I heard Chastity's question about the laptops were purchased for the school. I understand why that didn't work out for the school district, because the school district did go for a one-to-one operation, and because we have to image the equipment and stuff, it just, it was just really not gonna work out, and I think this may be a blessing in disguise, better use of that money anyway. So, I'll put a motion on the table that we spent a thousand dollars.
Yeah, approve the New Vision request for the grant.
Right.
I second the movement.
Discussion?
The request is $11,381.
Yeah, okay, I was waiting to see, I knew people were still looking at it.
You second? I second.
You second?
Oh, you second. Mark? Yeah.
Can we have a, a vote call?
Getting hungry.
I'm sorry, Heavy.
Casey Goss?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Vina Shae?
Yes.
Mark Terry?
Yes.
Aaron Wilson?
Yes.
Bill Wilson?
Yes.
One more?
One more, we have a, the DLI is handling the West Water Street project for us, and they brought in sealed bids for the project, so we can go through it now, or we can wait till streets on Thursday. Go through it now? No decision has been made, but at least the bid's gotta be open.
Who does this for, what project?
West Water Street, for the Indian Ranch and some other things. So we have to name these, these is, this is Bowman Excavation.
They provided no bid for him, but they did provide electronically.
Electronically?
Yeah, I don't see a dollar amount.
We don't have a dollar amount on here.
Correct. They, they did not provide a written bid, it is, was submitted by Penn Bid electronically.
Okay. Did we get that bid?
The main bid was $106,543, and the alternate bid was $1,568.
Say, say those two numbers again, sir?
What was the alternate?
The alternate was $1,568. Total base stamp alternate, $108,111.
Got that. $108,111.
This is Bowman, she said.
This is Bowman Excavating. This one is, I have a glue fix, Antares Sightwork? Yeah, it's Tyra Glue Fix.
I'm sorry. I can take care of that one.
All right, this is, I guess it's Antares, because I don't see a company on here. Jim, how'd you tell them to do this? Is this all electronic?
Everything was done through Penn Bid.
So it's all electronic?
Electronic.
So we don't have any.
So why am I opening them up?
Oh, they didn't put anything in there?
No.
Okay, well then, their electronic bid was $119,689 for the base bid, and the alternate was $2,632 total base bid, plus the alternate, $122,321. And just so you know, the actual low bidder, if accepted, we do require them to provide a handwritten bid hand-signed instead of just one that was PDF'd and uploaded.
All right, Jim, so Thursday night, Beverly Streets meeting, 1700, all right? So we're gonna open the rest of these up if it's open to you.
We don't have Streets meeting.
Long words. Or long words? Next week is that, you wanna do it now?
I, I would still have you open all the other ones, because it was advertised.
I don't need to open them.
Yeah, we don't.
Glenn Hawbaker, Glenn Hawbaker.
What did Glenn Hawbaker do?
Glenn Hawbaker was $237,911, base bid, with the alternate was $6,160. Total was $244,071.
Okay. R.C. Bowman?
Yeah, R.C. Bowman.
R.C. Bowman.
This is different from the other Bowman?
Yeah, Bowman Excavation.
Yeah, this is R.C., or RG.
Alternate, $3,0136. Base bid plus alternate, $94,636.
We got one more, one more.
Midstate Paving.
Midstate Paving, base bid, $152,918. Alternate, $3,920. Base bid plus alternate, $156,838.80.
Last one is Greenland Construction.
Greenland Construction, $176,110 is the base bid, with the alternate, $3,360. Base bid plus alternate, $179,470.
R.C. Bowman.
Just note that, for this particular project, receiving six bids is, is pretty good. You know, considering this is a smaller project compared to some other, you know, bids that might be out there, so pleased that we got six, and we'll be able to determine that in the near future. Thank you.
I think somebody needs to look at the lowest bid ever.
Well, he, he said that if it's done electronically, and the lowest bid will have to submit a written, correct?
Correct.
Well, just to make sure that.
Yeah, so how soon will we have that before we actually award this?
I'd probably say four to five days.
Okay.
I'll call them morning. Just so you know, when we had the pre-bid, everybody had to be there. So, you know, when we had the pre-bid, everybody had to be there at the pre-bid in order to be able to bid. They were told something like, "You must fill it out and submit a written bid." But we can't, they can do it. They did it electronically, but.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, Abby. We can do that as soon as we get it. Okay, Bob, you're here. It's not raining.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. The good news is, the fire department runs, run volume was very low this past month. We responded to eighteen alarms, and that consisted of a building fire, cooking fire, brush fire, five medical assists, four vehicle accidents with injuries, one without injuries, a water rescue, that was out of town, that was up the Baytown way. We had natural gas leak, downed power lines one, and a lockout, non-attacking fire operation. A couple of side notes. The department training package has started to put in use last weekend. We had linking hour of water rescue class, it was off the fire department. Also, comes July, we have a forty-six hour vehicle rescue class coming up on the package. And later on in the year, it's gonna be truck company operations, engine company operations, all that package. Also, the money that is kind of put my budget this year to have the host test of the fire department, that'll be done this weekend. We have to use the center county training complex to do it, since the fire academy isn't full operation. I made arrangements to only be one inch of them out of town at times, so we're still gonna be covered by the, we're gonna do that. Also, the board manager is kind enough to offer us some vehicles to set down at the public works facility on the south side that's gonna be junked. So, we're gonna use a training session now sometime within the next two weeks. We have five vehicles there. We're going to use a couple of them for vehicle rescue. I'll have the captain of the city take charge of that. We also have a couple there to burn, which I'll have the captains of the other two stations take, take charge of that. Also, as soon as I get dates out, I'll ask Kim to give you guys an email. Appreciate it. It's very much, it's a trip to action. We're happy to see you there. So, fire department's doing their job. Everyone's strong, and thank you for all your support.
I got a question, Bob.
Yes.
How, how are we meeting now with the fire safety things that we talked about last meetings?
As far as.
Coming up with the Powerpoint, or?
We haven't had a chance to say that, but we will. I just want to keep it in the front of my mind.
We didn't forget that.
I think it's a good idea, so.
It'll get done.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. PSAB's spring conference was changed from an in-person to a virtual last week. It was Monday, Tuesday, and part of Wednesday. And I know Kim and Jen had an opportunity to sit in on a few of the sessions, and I think I was in on all of them. But I just wanted to bring up just a couple, especially the legislative works. We have two attorneys at PSAB that are lobbyists that go to, up on the hill, to Senate and to the House, to fight on things that are important to us here in the borough, and all the boroughs in the state. And one of the things is an ongoing thing with radar being used in municipalities. We've been fighting this thing for years and years and years. Two weeks ago, it was supposed to be voted on in the House, and two reps brought up to more concerns, so they're now, you know, pushed it aside again. But hopefully, and I always, I know I mentioned this last time, that I was very, thought that we were going to be able to get that vote, when the Transportation Committee voted unanimously to have it done. But now it's being held up in the House and Senate again. Another thing that was discussed was the, the fact that so many of the boroughs, especially the county seats, have a large percentage of exempt, tax-exempt buildings, which causes a problem. You know, we see that here. I think we have like thirty-one percent of our properties now are tax-exempt. So, it does, you know, cause a problem with our tax base. So, they're trying to come up with a program that would give money back to the boroughs that have more than fifteen percent of tax-exempt properties. So, they're looking at working on that. And then also, the advertising situation, you know, so many boroughs were requesting to be able to do their advertising for meetings and, you know, everything they go to a local newspaper for, to put it through social media. So, this, believe it or not, this is a big issue. You know, and you wouldn't think it would be, you know, but it is. And they've been working on that, you know, constantly on that, too. Those are the three that I thought you might be interested in. And I did sit in on the police. There were two gentlemen, did a conversation, a discussion on the police. And I have to say, after hearing that, our chief and executive officer are doing a wonderful job with our police department. A lot of what was discussed, suggestions, we are already doing, you know, so I wanted to thank them and to bring that to all of your attention, that, you know, things are being done right down there. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Rich?
I'll do this from here. I haven't talked about enough. Number one, address lying country. What if we would, we put this in a policy, our officers would just request the nearest tow truck available? Because basically, the way we used to do it was state police. If it was blocking traffic, if it was a traffic hazard.
Closest tow truck available would be lying country.
But what if he's already out on a call?
Yeah.
Well, what if Parsons is? I lived this. I'm telling you, he's not lying. I lived it for a long time. They did the same thing to me. And I was in town. I used to hear all this stuff from 911. They say the next day, well, you weren't available last night. They never called me. It has to get straightened up, because this is ridiculous.
But if we would work this with the county for the rotation, basically, any crash in Lewis Town is going to be blocking traffic to cause a hazard, unless it's in the parking lot. So.
Give me a figure on how many Parsons gets compared to him. I'll bet you find out there's a lot of them. You get them figures.
I'd have to look through all of them, because we don't record, other than in narrative, who chose it. I could search, and I believe it. I believe it.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm telling you, if the same thing.
It's gonna change.
Whenever I had my trucks, it was Smith and Parsons, and they got everything in Lewis Town. And I had my business in Lewis Town. So, what's fair about that?
See, we used to have, at the dispatch desk, we had a rotation book. And you mark it down, next one online. Unless it was causing a hazard, which you would say, nearest available, get somebody out here.
Well, whatever they do, it doesn't work.
That's something we can, like I said, you're gonna have to sit down with the county and work this out.
That was done before, right? It was, everybody sat down with them and tried to work it out. That's what went on that time. That's when they went to the rotation. That was never Herkert was here. That was a long time ago.
And he did say that since Herkert left, Bill, that it hasn't happened.
No.
So, he might have been the reason that it happened, so we gotta figure out how we make it happen again. If it worked, did it work, Bill?
Seemed like it did, yeah.
Okay, so if it worked once, you know we can do it again.
Yeah, exactly. It has to be.
Unless, unless the individual would ask for a particular.
Yeah, if they ask for a particular company, then you.
Yeah, I mean, you almost have to go by whoever they want. You know, or if they belong to AAA or something, you know.
I'll take care of that tonight. There's no more.
There isn't anybody in town that has trucks. They come from Mifflin Town.
DEDs?
Yeah.
Yeah. But you request the nearest available tow truck. In town, it's gonna be blocking traffic and gas.
Oh, I know. I know about it.
So, well, yeah, exactly. But I'll put that out tonight for the guy. No more requesting specific companies unless requested by.
It could be a lot better than what it is.
I think we still need to sit down and have something in writing with the county.
Yeah.
So, that that's passed on from not, doesn't matter who the chief is, or who's the head of dispatch, that everybody knows that's how that works.
That's what I'm saying. I want to put in my policy.
Yep.
That you will not request a specific tow company unless the occupant wants it done. You request nearest available, period. And then county does the rotation.
Yeah, I think that'd work out for the time being. Much better than it is now.
I'll eat that throughout the loop. Statistics. Calls for service, five hundred and forty-five. The last month, we were at four hundred and forty-three, so it's summertime and starting to get busy. Traffic citations, twenty, that's up five from last month. Non-traffic citations, fourteen, that's the same as last month. Written warnings, ten, that's down from last month. Parking tickets, one hundred and twenty-three, which is down from last month. Street maintenance tickets, two hundred and fifty-two, which is down slightly from last month. My main reason for being here, other than with statistics, is our body camera. With great help from Lisa Stollnicker, who can explain the finance part of it, we have decided to go with the reveal body camera, which we tested last year, and we're testing again right now. The reason we like that is the four-facing screen, so the person you're talking to will see themselves. And that might help de-escalate their attitude a little bit. If they know they're being recorded, they can see it.
What's the brand name, Rich?
Reveal. Reveal. Media.
Of course, the price difference between back camera.
A lot less.
Really?
For, and it was for the quote.
A lot, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, and the quality is there. And the demo set we have has been in circulation for several years. And it says a lot, they're still working, they're ready to use things. The total cost with a two-year no-fault warranty, which means no matter what happens to the camera for what reason, they'll offset it or replace it. And it also covers replacement of the batteries if necessary. That tow was seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty. I know Chief told me that they budgeted nine thousand for the cameras, and the church donated three thousand for body cameras. When we originally were gonna do this, we were going to have twelve cameras, and they would rotate through the troops. With that price, that will get us eighteen cameras, so it will be a per capita assigned camera. So, it's a lot easier for me to keep track of who's digging the camera. It's automatically logged out. We have officers, so they won't have to go through every round process, so they don't have to have access to the computer that actually houses the software. I want to limit access as much as possible, and it's evidence, right? It's we want to buy people's access to evidence. So, there's a standalone system that comes with a Dell seventy-four hundred series, about the price, eight terabyte redundant storage, which two eight terabyte hard drives. And basically, the way the procedure is, if it is a misdemeanor or felony crime, I'll automatically burn a DVD copy, because I trust computers to know if it's a. So, we'll have that for a long minute.
Don't we have a grant for that, too?
I was just kidding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, Lisa, can you explain the grant?
I hope I can. Mifflin County, we submitted an application for all of the law enforcement within the whole county. But opting out of it at this point are probation and the correction facility with the sheriff's and all of our local law enforcement. The total grant was for eighty-five thousand dollars, and was based on the number of cameras that each individual department chose. So, if they chose twelve cameras, and we were estimating at the time, two thousand dollars per camera. So, like Rich has said, it came in a lot less than what we had originally thought. There is a fifty percent match with this grant, but they do allow in-kind. And so the officer's time, training, wearing the body cams, the past two weeks, three weeks, four months, I don't know. It just seems like you guys are always testing ones, which is great, because I really think that they have looked at what they're using, saw what was gonna work best for the township or the borough, and really took their time choosing.
And the truth is, I think body camera is very important in this day and age, and extremely important for the safety of the citizens and the police officers. So, I don't think it's an area we do want to back away from at all. You feel the best body camera because they can actually see themselves as your.
And it also allows the officer to review his video in his own report. So, he doesn't have to download.
So, you can verbatim write what was said.
Write only camera. He hits review. He can mark it as evidential, which automatically, when it downloads into the system, the retention period is set to, right now, nine hundred and ninety-nine years.
Can they erase any of it?
No. They can't act, they, that's why I said I don't want them having access to anything. The other good thing about this system and the software, it's CEGIS compliant. It keeps a log of everything the camera does. When it's turned on, when it's turned off, for how long it's on. So, if they go to an incident where, I'm gonna put the camera on, and turns it off, they can say, well, I turned it on, it didn't work. No, you turn it off, so you're now fired. That's the kind of audit trail this system has. Anytime anybody looks at a video that's been downloaded, it logs that, who it was, and it's all passworded. So, if they want a copy of a video, we burn it on a DVD, they can have that for a certain period of time, until the case is over, and then it gets destroyed, just like the evidence will, you know, after the appeal period. So, we have, in the last three weeks, close to thirty videos that are for evidence. And it's, it's amazing what you can, what you can do with these things. We also have an articulated lens, so no matter the size of the officer, if it's a short person, the lens can tilt up. So, once they're wearing it in the same spot in your uniform, we adjust the lens to where it needs, and it will lock in. So, these, I think they're seven ninety-nine apiece. We have Bluetooth and Wi-Fi, so we can set a Bluetooth trigger in the car if we start having instances of, you go to an incident, it's a high-stress incident, shots fired, with Tinnerloven Street the other day, that we can have it, so that officer leaves the car, the camera can automatically start recording.
Can we give it a view that remotely?
We can set it up. You can actually stream live from these cameras. Yeah, they're, they're taking a beating, and they're still working good, so.
How many do you have right now you're testing, Rich?
Six.
So, we, you looked at it, and so what are we looking here as far as the grant and our portion? Are we good as far as our nine thousand plus three?
We're better than that.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna be fine.
Okay.
You pretty much are gonna be able to walk out with the federal portion of grant being, paying for the cameras, and your training and in-kind time as your match.
Oh, okay, great.
So, the cameras, seventeen-five, total project would be thirty-five thousand. So, the only issue is council would have to purchase the cameras and then get reimbursed through the grant, but you would get all the money back.
Right.
So, what's that dollar figure? Yeah, what's the dollar figure we have, thirty-five thousand?
That's the amount of the project. The amount for the cameras and the system is seventeen-five. That's, that's the amount that you have to.
So, that's where the council has to vote on seventeen-five.
Do we need to vote today? Do we need that today, Rich?
We would like to get it done as soon as possible.
I'm asking. I didn't know if this was informational or not.
I've been actually holding on. We're supposed to return this demo set.
Oh, okay.
We've been trying to hold on to it until we see if we can get this.
Make a motion, we can.
Okay.
Thanks, Abby. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go.
Thank you.
We'd like to thank Lisa too for all the work and...
Yes.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure working with them, and they're so excited about it. I mean, you can just tell his passion for this stuff, I'm like...
Seventeen, five, or six?
If you have any questions about grants, just tell me.
Did you get, when you mail them up for the township?
Yeah. So I told you, I had this in mind. They had to submit scorecards and your policies and procedures for PCCD to review and compare to state laws and regulations and stuff. And so Lewis Town has, they were due tomorrow, and we already have them submitted and have helped them return and stuff.
Excellent.
They do great work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Eighteen?
Seventeen, five? Oh, eighteen, yeah, yes.
Next thing on your list, Rich, is the generator. Do you want me to talk that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no problem. So the generator for the police building, the bottom line on this is, the generator is part of the contract for the police building that we are renting right now. Under the new lease, the borough is requested to install it at a cost of $23,000. After the lease, the police station expires in about five years. That generator is supposed to stay with that building, and the borough loses that $23,000 asset. The purpose of the generator right now is basically twofold. One is to power locks, electric locks, that are planned to be installed in the building, so that when power is lost, the generator kicks on and we still have locks in the building. The second thing is for internet, et cetera. But the main thing is the locks. So if we don't move forward with adjusting the locks, I've already talked to the chief of police about this, if we don't put new locks in there, or just use the same locks we've had for years, which are basically just either keypad or the key locks, then we don't need the generator for the building. And that would save the borough $23,000. So the discussion is, the issue is, moving forward with that lease without the generator being added as part of the lease and the lock upgrades not required.
I think that's the way we go. I can't see spending $23,000 for a generator that we're gonna let there.
I can't either.
Especially if we're gonna look at potential other building, it doesn't seem to make sense to make that, to make that purchase when the...
See, we need to vote on that at all?
I'm gonna turn this one over to Mark. Sorry, Mark, this is a legal question, I think, because the lease is already been partially signed.
Well, like I said, to me, the legal position of the borough is that we are holding attendance under many of the prior meetings. So at some point, I guess what you're looking at doing is approving the new lease. So what they should do is get us a copy of the lease...
Without this...
Without this generator stuff in there, and then that's what should be approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense? Any other questions, discussion on that?
To get that taken care of, could we do it with that stipulation? You know, approve it as long as that...
I'd like to see it first.
You do?
Yeah.
And you've looked over the lease before? You know, except that...
I would like to see it. That's just my position.
It's gonna prolong it another month, you know?
Well, we're still paying the rent, so does it really matter?
No, it's just that...
I mean, we're not...
I'm the mayor, I didn't think it was...
Right, we're not going anywhere, so let's just wait and have it in writing and review it, and then we'll sign it.
I'll keep working, Mayor.
All right.
Okay, I'll see if I can get a copy of it, get it changed.
Anything else, Rich? Anything else on that, Kim?
I'm not in the generator right now.
Okay. Record, no form again, I see?
Correct.
There was no form, but the record pool had some news if I...
For sure.
She went to, she went to, it said the pool opened on Memorial Day, despite cooler temperatures that day, there was a nice turnout. The pool has been open daily except for a few days, it was closed for inclement weather. They were planning to offer a few sessions of swim lessons from June 21st to the 25th, and they would like to offer at least two more rounds of swim lessons through July and August, possibly four, depending on interest. The costs for the swim lessons are $40 per child. Evening events they'd like to do, last year they did two evening events, they were held very, the two evening events they held last evening for last year were very successful. So tentatively, they are planning a splash hop on June 30th, and then they would like to do two events in July to be determined. And they'd like to do a live DJ for the splash hop with a cost of $100.
Yeah, they were very successful last year.
They were extremely successful, and I heard we have no concession down there.
Yeah, where are we with that?
Yeah.
That's on here for further discussion later.
Oh, okay.
I thought we discussed, you know, maybe somebody making a trip to Sam's Club and buying him both.